Do we see Tal and Joe? I wonder if someone else can see more. We'll find out shortly. I'd like to call to order the Middletown City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. We'll start with a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe Ms. Cohen will be acting in Amy Skank's presence this evening to do our roll call.
Yes ma'am, can you hear me from there?
Oh yes, you're very loud. I like it.
Okay. Um, I will start with calling Miss Vettori.
Here.
Ms. Nanny? Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mulligan?
Here.
Mayor Condry?
Here.
Okay, and it looks like this evening we have a presentation about the Parks Master Plan.
Yes, we do. Allison Manning, who is the city's Natural Resources Coordinator with Public Works and Utilities, is going to come to the podium and offer a presentation and update on the Parks Master Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Manning.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this past May, we began working with a consulting firm on a Parks and Recreation Master Plan update for the city. Uh, and up to date, Parks and Recreation Master Plan will map Middletown's course for development, uh, for developing the recreational benefits for that residents and businesses want, while also coordinating with development, housing, and transportation efforts, and identifying critical synergies that can be incorporated for maximum benefit. We are excited for this opportunity, and I would like to introduce Sarah Evans with V3, our lead consultant on the project, to give more details about what we've been working on.
Thank you, Ally, and thank you, everyone, um, in the council chambers, for the opportunity to present the project to you all. Can you all hear me? And let me share my screen so that I can, um, uh, present our, our presentation. While I bring that up, I'd like to turn it over to Dawn Staley, uh, to kick us off here.
Hello, everyone. Uh, this is Dawn Staley with V3. Um, can you, can everybody hear me?
Oh yeah, it's quite loud in here.
Okay, uh, I'll try not to yell. So we're leading the effort, um, and we've teamed with Human Nature, another landscape architecture firm out of Cincinnati, and we bring, uh, I think, I think a robust team to this project, looking at the community's park system as it stands today, and what its potential is as we move into the next decade. You've got a lot of activity going on. We were really impressed with the amount of, of community improvement, uh, planning that the city of Middletown is doing. It gave a great, uh, I think basis for the work that we're doing now with the community, um, taking a look at the park system and, um, trying to identify where the opportunities are and where the challenges are and how you can meet those, uh, moving forward. Um, a lot of great assets there. So like I said, we put together, um, a really robust team for the project, and, um, we're leading the project out of our Indianapolis office. V3 is a firm that is based around the Great Lakes region. We have our office in Indianapolis where our landscape architecture practice is located. And then we have a, uh, we also have natural resource engineers and, uh, and ecological scientists, um, on our staff. We also have another, I would say, 150 people up in our Woodbridge, Illinois office just west of Chicago. We have a downtown Chicago office, and then we have, um, other practices in the Midwest. In Ohio, we have, um, offices in Cincinnati and in Columbus. Um, so we're, we're very familiar with, um, the region, and we're particularly familiar with your community. We, uh, we're a design engineer on the Sunset Park renovations, and that's a project that Sarah and I both worked on, and we're very excited to contribute improvements to that park. So, uh, from our team, in addition to the deep bench of expertise that we draw from, Sarah Evans, who you just met, uh, leading this project as project manager. Sarah's got a lot of experience in trail and park planning, and significant experience in public engagement, and those, those skills have been really handy because, uh, she knows parks, she knows, uh, community engagement from a lot of different directions, including, um, having to adapt to the pandemic and the challenges that it brings for bringing people together and, and building consensus. And she's got some really great experience doing that. My role on the project, I'm the Landscape Architecture Group Leader for V3, and my really just project oversight and, uh, project review, quality control, and guidance. So, um, and I will turn it over to Chris Manning from Human Nature, so he can explain the, his team and, and their role as part of our team on this project.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Um, on behalf of Human Nature, we'd like to thank, uh, Middletown for the opportunity to be part of this, uh, exciting project and really enjoying working with Ally and V3 and everyone. Human Nature, we're based in Cincinnati. Um, we're a team of landscape architects, planners, urban designers, community planners, environmental planners, and, uh, I'm one of the co-founders, uh, principal and landscape architect.
I think, I think we might have lost Sarah.
Oh, Chris.
Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Delandro. Um, I'm a environmental planner, a community planner with Human Nature. I am looking forward to presenting, uh, this evening to you. And then also, um, Gary Walnutzak, another, um, our, uh, our second, uh, principal at, at Human Nature, a landscape architect, uh, could not make it this evening, but is also, uh, a part of our, our collaborative, uh, team effort.
Thank you, Sarah. As, um, hello, folks. As Dawn mentioned, my name is Sarah Evans. I'm the project manager for this effort. Um, we are really excited for this opportunity to work, um, on the Middletown Parks Master Plan. The slide in front of you here is outlining the process that we're undertaking, and we're, uh, breaking this down into three phases. The first phase, awareness phase, is the, um, the phase that we're currently in, and that's where we're really getting to, uh, know your community and explore your community. So we've done that in a variety of ways, um, through collecting data from desktop analysis and G, collecting GIS data, but then we've also, um, as, as I like to say, we've gotten our boots on the ground and explored all 32 of your parks and public spaces. Uh, we looked at quantitative data such as how many acres of parkland within your community you devote to Parks and Recreation, um, and how many dollars you dedicate to parks. Uh, and then we've also looked at qualitative data such as, uh, how accessible are your parks within your community, and particularly looking at how accessible they are in, from low to moderate income neighborhoods. So we've done a lot of that inventory, uh, work to date. We've also, I've gone through our process to identify stakeholders and, um, identify our public engagement strategy, which as Dawn mentioned, this year, uh, looks quite different than any other year in the past. Uh, we are working with three different advisory groups. So a technical advisory group, a community advisory group, and a focus group. Uh, they'll be our sounding board and provide information to us on what are Middletown's strengths and opportunities when it comes to thinking about Parks and Recreation in Middletown. And then we're also, uh, doing a public meeting, or this year it will be a public presentation, which will be hosted online, as well as a survey, and I'll get into some of those details a little bit further in the presentation. Uh, after we've gathered all of this data and heard feedback from your community, uh, we'll be doing our analysis and compiling all of that into a needs assessment. So that's really our first, uh, portion of the project. In our subsequent phases, the exploration phase, is where we'll be developing concepts, not only for site-specific, but also looking at your whole park system and how their parks are connected. We'll be coming back to stakeholders for input and guidance, refining concepts, and then we have another public meeting. Based on the feedback that we get from that second public meeting in the exploration phase, we'll move into vision phase and, and refine our concepts into a preferred concept. We'll also be drafting the preliminary master plan, getting stakeholder input, and then putting the draft plan out for public comment period. Based on the feedback we receive, then, we'll finalize the master plan. And what I'd really like to emphasize throughout this, this three-step, uh, phased process is that we're really, it's an iterative process where we're working hand-in-hand with Ally and Scott Taddish, um, from the city's perspectives to guide us, and then also working with our advisory groups and the, uh, larger community so that we're getting that buy-in and feedback through each phase of the project. Sarah's gonna, Sarah Delandro, um, is gonna dive in just a little bit into detail about what we've already found as we've explored your parks.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, as part of the awareness phase, the project team conducted a system-wide inventory of Middletown's natural and built systems. And this map here is, it shows one example of some of the inventory maps created for this phase. It shows how the park system is currently connected to the community through roads, sidewalks, and trails that serve as vehicular, pedestrian, and bike corridors. Bike infrastructure in Middletown is currently limited, limited to the Great Miami River Trail, State Route 4, Smith Park, and Jaco Park. And improving these connections could include enhancing roadways with park-like character as greenways and bike corridors, and enhancing surface streams as blueways and water trail corridors. This system of corridors could provide community access through physical connection to many parks throughout the system. Access to parks, whether driving or walking, is a key aspect of whether there are adequate park facilities available for residents. Individuals who live closer to parks will visit them more often, and those who are unable to walk to parks are less likely to visit, and therefore deprived of the opportunity to experience the many benefits that parks can provide. It's therefore essential that parks be easily accessible to all citizens. Ensuring that all residents live within a safe quarter-mile or a 10-minute walk is one way to make parks accessible, and is a goal being addressed by park professionals throughout the country. Parks within Middletown's system are well-distributed, and, and the map on the previous slide shows, um, those areas that are within that quarter, 10-minute walk, um, perimeter from a park. Uh, during our, uh, site inventories, we evaluated 32 park sites that represent 321 acres that are owned and operated by Middletown. Uh, the city parks were classified into six different park typologies based on size, context, and features found on-site. These include plazas, mini-parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, nature preserves, and undeveloped parks. And during our visits, we noted and ranked existing conditions and site features, such as structure, circulation, activity areas, amenities, connectivity, and overall park character. And our evaluations were classified with an excellent good for fair or poor ranking system that was color-coded, like you see on the slide here. Circulation was assessed for pedestrian, bike, and automobile, as well as ADA accessibility. In general, Middletown's parks are served well by perimeter roads and sidewalks, which are in fair condition. Uh, overall, there is a lack of bike infrastructure in and around the parks, which presents a great opportunity for future development. There's also a lack of internal site circulation beyond the perimeter sidewalks, which presents a challenge to accessing park amenities, especially for those with disabilities. Um, this presents another great opportunity for future improvements. And our assessment of activity areas included playgrounds, sport courts, sport fields, and picnic areas. And the playgrounds are found in all of Middletown's neighborhood parks. And while the average age of playground structures is over 18 years, many of these, uh, many playgrounds are in good structural condition. Uh, however, playgrounds more than 10 years old likely need updates or replacements to meet the latest safety standards.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, as Sarah was diving into some of those details before on the summary matrix, we started to notice some themes, uh, as we explored your parks that we would like to dive in with your team, uh, further as we develop the Parks Master Plan. So I've got these themes up here, um, that we started to see in the parks. Connectivity really deals with not only connectivity within the park, but how connected are your parks to each other, to destinations within your community, and to, um, the Great Miami River Trail for regional connectivity. The theme of equity, uh, has us asking about, are parks serving different populations of Middletown in the same way? Um, are they distributed equitably in your community? A common image, uh, ask questions about the signage, if there's signage present, uh, to, to mark the park system. Um, are site furnishings in a family so that it makes the park experience, uh, similar when visiting park sites, but also making repairs and replacements more economical for your public works department? Activities, sociability, and variety deal with, um, asking if there's a variety of landscape types for different recreation experiences, and, uh, just providing different, a variety to attract different users. And then the last theme of sustainability has us asking questions about if the park system is promoting a healthy and active lifestyle, and what are the implications of the invasive management and turf mowing practices? This slide here really highlights our public engagement process, and as I mentioned, it's a very iterative process throughout each of the phases, and we really, um, emphasize the importance of coming back to the community in each phase for feedback and, and really guidance. The residents of Middletown are the experts on Middletown, so we're going to listen to them. This last slide is, um, highlighting the call to action that our public survey opportunity represents. We've been working with Ally and Shelby in particular to, um, develop a survey that can be hosted online on your city's website, um, as well as having hard copies that will be distributed at different destinations within the community. One of those is at the city building. And then, um, we've also been working with your team to translate the survey into Spanish so that we can cast as wide a net as possible when asking for feedback on parks. Um, the survey period will be open from November 18th through December 31st. And as I mentioned, once we close that survey period, then we'll be analyzing all of the responses and see how they will inform, uh, recommendations that we make in the Parks Master Plan. That image there at left is just a sample, uh, question that we're asking, and some of the questions will include imagery so that they can better communicate the concepts that we're trying to, um, get feedback on. And with that, I will, um, close our presentation and entertain any questions that you might have. But I, um, I wanted to close in saying thank you again for this opportunity to work with the community. It's, um, even though we're just in this first phase, it's been really fun to learn more about your community and particularly work with your public works department. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think that was, uh, I really liked the charts. I'm a very logical-brained person, so I like, love the organization, and I also appreciate that you used the word "opportunity" when speaking to maybe some of the, uh, areas that we could do better in with our parks. So I like the positive attitude, and, uh, this is exciting. I'm excited to take the survey and get people more aware of it and really improve our park system.
I would say, I guess my biggest surprise is the, uh, lack of ADA accessibility in our parks, and the ability to improve that, I think, is something that, um, can really improve the city.
Yeah, thanks to, uh, to staff, thanks to V3 and, and all the consultants. I'm excited to see this, the, uh, citizenry start to weigh in on this because certainly our parks is a critical piece of how we not only draw new families to town, but retain the families that we have. Uh, so I, I would encourage staff to, to leverage council and any other resources that they feel they need to have to get this out as broad as possible for community input.
Yeah, do you know, oh, sorry. Oh, that's okay. I was gonna say, well, we appreciate any support in helping spread the word on that, for sure.
And then just going down the line, I know I've spoken about this before when I was at the, um, National League of Cities Conference, but I know that there's a lot of grant money available and different programs. So obviously, as, and I believe we've rejoined that, um, constituency. So as we're thinking about what these changes are and the funding piece of it, you know, obviously, we want to be able to tie in the opportunity to get some, um, funding.
Ms. Evans, I had one question. This is Joe Mulligan.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm under, if I understand the PowerPoint correctly, it seems as though, um, your recommendations will include, some items that are actually outside the boundaries of our park in the sense that there's gonna be some, um, recommendations on connectivity for bikes using, you know, a, as we lay out our roads for the next 10 to 20 years, there's also gonna be some recommendations on, on bike paths and, and using existing infrastructure?
Yes, so we'll identify where those opportunities might lie. Um, so to identify different connections internal to your city, um, but then also how, you know, we know how the Great Miami River Trail provides connectivity to other communities. So what it might, um, how, how we can make connections within the community that then tie back to that trail so that you can, you know, use that as an asset uh, in talking about how well-connected, uh, Middletown is to other portions of your region.
Okay.
Be specifically looking outside of the city of Middletown, but just thinking broadly about how to make connections.
No, I was just thinking more along the lines of how, how would bike riders, you know, safely, uh, navigate to that trail if they lived, you know, just in a, a central neighborhood, not adjacent to the, uh, the bike trail that's on the river? But your, your recommendation might have some ideas on how to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, one other thing I remember when we were first talking about doing this project was there were a lot of citizens that were interested in the pools and whether that would be, uh, included in the park's assessment. Is that something you guys are still planning to look at and, and weigh in on?
We have, um, asked a couple of questions, actually, in the survey, and, and we worked, uh, really hard with Ally and Shelby and Scott on, um, those questions because we know that the Aquatic Center is a kind of a hot topic in the community. And so we really wanted to get feedback on that, um, that piece so that we can, again, get public input and hear what folks in the community are telling us um, that they want to see.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for these guys? All right, well, thank you so much for the great presentation and for all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
All right, everybody heard it. The survey is going live tomorrow. Is that right? What's today? Yep, tomorrow. All right, we'll promote it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have citizen comments. Did we receive any citizen comments of any sort? I don't see any physical ones here. Ms. Cohen, do you happen to have, uh, information about citizen comments? I just want to make sure we don't miss them. Oh, you're muted.
I was not made aware of any that were, uh, received prior, nor do I have any knowledge of what was received tonight.
Okay, sounds good. We'll do council comments next, and I see Mr. Mulligan on my screen. Would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, well, since we last met, we have had, we have the, uh, the results of the, um, tax levy regarding, uh, roads, and it came back that, uh, nearly 60% of the residents voted in favor of that. So, um, I think that, uh, provides council with some guidance on, uh, where we need to go and the importance of, of repairing our infrastructure. So, uh, you know, I look forward to working with staff to, uh, fulfilling the promises, uh, directing that money, um, efficiently, aggressively towards, uh, road repairs in the next two years. I know Mr. Palanick has informed us, uh, at least informally, that, uh, I know staff and department heads are gonna be meeting on a regular basis, um, to attack that project uh, because it is important that we, um, fulfill the bonding, uh, process and, and deploy those resources quickly and, uh, address those, uh, long, long overdue needs. So I appreciate the, um, the support that our residents, uh, gave that. And, uh, finally, just to comment on, uh, very happy Thanksgiving wishes to everyone. Um, have a safe and, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vettori?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to send my condolences to the family of Cara Goheen and her fiance, Mike Stafford. She passed away last week. The services were today in her hometown outside of, um, Buffalo, New York. And anyone who knew or met Cara even once knows what a loss this is for our community. She was a true spirited, loving person who put everything she had into making Middletown a better place, and she will be very, very sorely missed for years to come. Um, and I hope that we can continue to honor her spirit and all the wonderful things and events that she did for our community over the years, and really let her be an inspiration to making Middletown a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Let me unmute myself. Thank you. Uh, I, I just want to echo what, what my two colleagues just, just said. Thank you to the citizens, um, for, uh, your trust in us for passing the roads levy. It's now our job to, to execute and not only deliver quickly, but professionally and efficiently. Uh, I look forward to, to seeing all those, uh, bulldozers and, uh, and the equipment on the streets here in the coming next two years. And then I just want to echo what Ms. Vettori said about Cara Goheen. We, we lost a, uh, very kind and generous and loving person. Uh, if you were ever at a ribbon-cutting downtown, she was there, taking the pictures, volunteering her time. And she will be sorely missed, and we send, uh, just our, our love and prayers to Mike and Cara's whole family. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Nanny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would also like to share my condolences to everyone mourning the passing of Cara Goheen. Uh, Cara was Middletown's biggest fan and cheerleader. She came to us by choice, not by birth, and became an irreplaceable member of our community. She volunteered her time to make Middletown a more vibrant place. She saw the best in us, even at the worst of times, and for this, we will miss her dearly. Uh, Cara was also a friend. Uh, losing her just doesn't feel real, but it reminds me how important it is to tell the people who mean the most to you how much you appreciate and love them. Life is a gift, and Cara always gave the best gifts. So be a gift giver, say "love ya," and always mean it.
Thank you. Thank you. We definitely are going to have a lot of ways to honor Cara, um, forever in our community and I look forward to doing that. She definitely, she meant a lot to us all. I want to address something. This, this is, this is a stack of all the legislation today. This is impressive. Our city staff is working incredibly hard with very limited budget to do a lot of work for our city. And this is a testament, um, to that work. So I just want to say thank you to our city staff for all that work. And I know the CARES Act funding has put about twice as much work, uh, on your shoulders. So thank you guys for doing that in, in a diligent way. And, and then I wanted to just remind everybody of two events coming up. We have the State of the City tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. We're gonna stream it live from the Sorg Opera House. The Middletown Youth Coalition has been working hard and talking to our department heads and learning about our city. And they're gonna do the presentations, uh, for the citizens. So we'll learn about the future of our city from our own, uh, youth. And then we also have a blood drive and a toy drive that we're coordinating at the Town Mall on Wednesday, the 2nd of December from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. If you want to give blood, register in advance. We'll be passing that link around. And it, it benefits, um, Community Blood Centers, which benefits Atrium Hospital. And we're doing that in coordination with the Blue Star Military Families of Dayton and the Community Blood Centers. And that's all I have this evening. Uh, Mr. Palanick, would you like to do a city manager report?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Uh, Madam Mayor, you had mentioned that we were working on a number of CARES Act expenditures. And among those are some small business economic development grant programs that we've talked about recently. I just wanted to update you a little bit on a couple of those programs. The CDBG Small Business Forgivable Loan Program that you approved, I believe, at the last city council meeting. That application period is now open this week. It will continue to be open through the remainder of this week through Friday, end of day. Uh, we have already received quite a number of applications, so people are interested. They're getting those in. We want to encourage other small businesses who may not have gotten them in, please do so. Contact our Economic Development Department. Uh, those applications are online and we want to make certain that everybody who could be eligible, uh, gets a chance to apply. Also this evening, you have an item on your agenda, which is Ordinance 2020-77, which is item number 13 under the legislation. Uh, we're asking you to approve a sub-grant agreement with Butler County so that we can receive $212,648 in additional CARES Act funds that will go to small business grant programs. We now also have finished the details and the applications and the format for that. Uh, we know that the application period will be available from November 23rd through November 30th. We hope to make awards by December 4th. So again, we encourage everybody to look on the website. We're gonna get as much information out as we possibly can. These grants will be up to $10,000. Uh, they will be funded by the funds that are coming from the CARES Act through the county. And I have all of that information available. And I can and will get out to city council and others who are interested, uh, this evening and after. So look forward to those. We think those are gonna be really good. We think that we hope to make at least 30 different grants out of the county program. And, uh, there's at least 170,000 also from the CDBG program. So in combination, at least around $400,000. Want to make sure those get out there soon. And we are in fact obligated by the CARES Act to make certain that they are all expended and awarded prior to December 30th. Uh, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Palanick. Ms. Cohen, would you like to present the consent agenda for us this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, for your consideration this evening, we have first to approve the city council minutes from October the 6th, 2020, to receive and file boarding commission minutes from the Historic Commission on August the 20th and September 17th of 2020, the Civil Service Commission from September 17th, 2020, receive and file the oath of office for Nikita Lancaster, Scott Renner, and Joshua Singleton, to confirm the personnel appointment of Joshua Moore to the position of correction officer in the Department of Public Safety Division of Police, approve the purchase of liquid phosphate or sodium hexamethophosphate for use at the water treatment plant from Bonded Chemicals Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $5.17 per gallon for the estimated usage of 7,392 gallons or approximately $38,216.64, and to receive and file a DORA application.
I move to approve the issues and actions set forth in the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Monica. Um, Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen, could you present the motion agenda for us as well?
Yes. For your motion and agenda item this evening, we have to approve the purchase of three new international trucks off of the ODOT contract for the Division of Streets Maintenance in the amount of $255,446.93 from Rush Truck Centers of Cincinnati, Ohio.
So move for adoption.
Second.
And, um, Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
I can continue the legislation, Madam Mayor?
That would be great. Thank you.
Fantastic. Um, we do have quite a few matter, matters for your consideration this evening. With a few, we are asking to be considered as an emergency. So first, I'd ask for a motion to waive charter requirements for two readings in 30 days to enactment regarding Resolution R. 2020-32, Ordinance O. 2020-77, Ordinance O. 2020-20-78, Ordinance O. 2020-79, Resolution R. 2020-34, Ordinance O. 2020-80, Ordinance O. 2020-81, Ordinance O. 2020-82, and Resolution R. 2020-35.
I move that the charter provision requiring readings on two separate days be waived and that the previously read resolutions and ordinances be declared emergencies and read one time only.
Second.
Um, Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome to our first matter this evening is Resolution R. 2020-32, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. This is the, uh, year-end various funds.
So move for adoption.
Second. Do we have any comments about this one?
I just had a, had a question and, and it's all right. Mr. Palanick, you may not know the answer. Uh, this year, our budget, uh, considered, uh, a reimbursement for a prior year supplemental that we had made to the, uh, to the health account. And we were expecting a refund this year. Are we still on schedule to, to receive that this year? And if, if you're not sure, a follow-up email or a follow-up comment at, at a future council meeting would, would be sufficient.
Councilman Moon, the answer is yes.
Great.
Yes, in December.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, you please call, roll for us.
Uh, Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
The next matter will be Ordinance O. 2020-66 and Ordinance amending Section 1050.07, Stormwater Schedule of Rates of the Codified Ordinances. This is here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second?
Do we have a second? Okay.
Do we have any comments about this one? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
The next matter we have is Ordinance O. 2020-67 and Ordinance amending Section 1040.03 of the Codified Ordinances, levying and assessing sewer rates. Here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second. Any comments?
Okay. Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Next matter is Ordinance O. 2020-68 and Ordinance amending Section 1066.07A of the Codified Ordinances and establishing a new solid waste collection fee. Here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments?
Uh, my only comment is to follow up on the question that I had asked at the last meeting about, uh, looking into the, um, some citizen issues that I had heard of on trash collection. And I, I wondered if anyone had ever looked into that.
I would ask Scott, were you familiar with that?
This is just regarding some of the yard waste that is prevalent this time of year and if...
Right, so the city around 10 or 15 years ago stopped doing curb, are we talking about leaf collection?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it, it is required to be bagged and placed with the trash.
Actually, it doesn't have to be bagged. It can be co-mingled. Yard waste can be co-mingled with your regular trash.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of people bag leaves, but you can also put them directly in your trash cans and they'll be picked up as well.
Right, but they do, they are required to be bagged or co-mingled.
Right, right. We do not pick them up curbside like we did 15 years ago.
And there shouldn't be any limitations to those being picked up
Correct.
as long as they're bagged appropriately.
Correct.
I had just heard from several lawn care professionals in the city that they had problems with that pickup this year. So I, I, you know, i- in a conversation with Rumkey about increasing the rates and renewing, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
Right, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll for us?
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
The next matter we have this evening is Ordinance O. 2020-69 and Ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city. Here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second. Any comments on this one? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Next matter we have this evening is Ordinance 2020-70 and Ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city that are hired January 1, 2018 or later. Also here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second?
Second.
Any comments on this one? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Number seven this evening is Ordinance O. 2020-71 and Ordinance establishing pay ranges and certain benefits for employee classifications in the Middletown Department of Health and Environment. Also here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Number eight this evening is Resolution R. 2020-33, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2020, annual budget. Here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just make a note that I believe our agenda, uh, has it as December 31, 2020. This is the annual budget for next year, so that should read 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Palanick. I was having that same thought myself.
I want to thank our finance department for all the hard work and the department heads, uh, putting this together. I know it's not a small feat, especially given the limited resources of this, uh, coming year. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Next matter is Ordinance O. 2020-72 and Ordinance amending the Highlands Historic District to include the properties located at 500, 502, and 504, the Alameda. This is here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Number 10 this evening is Ordinance O. 2020-73 and Ordinance amending the South Main Historic District, uh, to include the property located 812 South Main Street. Also here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Uh, Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
The next matter is Ordinance O. 2020-74 and Ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for a small business economic development grant with Higher Faculty LLC. Here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Number 12 this evening is Ordinance O. 2020-75 and Ordinance consenting to real property tax exemption pursuant to revise Code 5709.121, applicable to property owned by Warren County Community Services, and more particularly described as Warren County Auditor's parcel numbers 07032770061 and 07032770062. Also here for a second reading.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mayor Condrey?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Next matter is Ordinance number O. 2020-77 and Ordinance authorizing a sub-grant agreement with the Butler County Commissioners to receive funding to administer the Butler County Small Business Relief CARES Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, the Butler County Commissioners recently made the determination that they would earmark $1,500,000 of their CARES Act funds to make it available to each of their nine urbanized jurisdictions municipally, based on population, and provide it so that each of those jurisdictions could make small business relief, uh, grants within their jurisdictions. relief grants within their jurisdictions, in the case of the City of Middletown, we are receiving two hundred twelve thousand six hundred and forty eight dollars. So in this agreement, we're basically agreeing to accept that money and to develop a grant program to provide to small businesses within our community, to get the money out and awarded prior to December thirtieth, and to award these grants that would be up to ten thousand dollars specifically for businesses who have either twenty five or fewer full-time employees. So as I was describing in the city manager's report, we have developed a program which we're trying to be as flexible as possible and really focus primarily on just the fact that it is there to provide relief to small businesses who have experienced some level of economic hardship as a result of the pandemic. So for the most part, if you are a small business, if you have received and experienced some level of economic hardship, then you probably are eligible, but all the details are provided and we're going to get those out soon. We will prioritize specifically those who haven't received assistance through any other programs that might have been available. So we have to do this quickly, that's the reason for the emergency, obviously, because as I had mentioned, we will be making the applications available now through November thirtieth, the awards will happen around December the fourth, and then we have to make sure those all get out before December thirtieth. So look for that information and hopefully we'll be able to get something on the order of thirty different grants out, if we assume that they might average around seven thousand dollars to small businesses in our community that have received and experienced hardship as a result of the pandemic.
Mr. Palanick, do you know if we're considering in this round including nonprofits? I've had a few reach out to me that I know the current hundred and seventy thousand round that we have applications open for now does not include nonprofits, so I wasn't sure if we thought about including them in this next round.
We are not, and I don't believe Butler County is allowing us to do that, I think they've specified that it be for for-profit small businesses, so we're trying to be consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
That being said, is there something that we can look into in the future, maybe, to try to help out those nonprofits here in Middletown, just taking that note and seeing if there's something else that we can do?
We will certainly keep that in mind, and if, you know, if we have remaining funds or if there's another program that comes along, we can certainly consider that, yeah, if it's eligible within the federal guidelines within the program. I think there was, it seems to me, I could be wrong, but it seems like one of the counties did provide maybe some funding for the nonprofits, and I'd hate to speculate because I'd probably be wrong, but I thought I saw that somewhere.
Okay.
So there may be some ability, yeah.
If you could look into it, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Anecdotally, I'm receiving a lot more contact from nonprofits lately looking for funding, so it's definitely a community need, I mean, we all expected that, I'm sure, but it's actually hit now. I also had just one other quick question, is it, is there a quick delineation or description you can give me between the CDBG loans and the CARES Act loans, I know they have different requirements and we're looking at different things?
Yeah, CDBG will always have more restrictions because it's through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it's always going to have to serve people of low to moderate income, the CARES Act don't have those specific requirements. Also with CDBG, they have to technically be a loan, even though we make them forgivable, so that if you qualify in certain ways, then essentially they wound up being forgiven and they act like a grant, but they have to be developed as and provided as a forgivable loan because HUD doesn't, you know, allow it any other way, so again, one of the restrictions. With the CARES Act funding, there tends to be fewer restrictions, it gives us greater leeway in terms of the way we develop the program, we don't have nearly as much leeway with the CDBG funding.
Okay, and are they similar timelines from what I can tell us?
The CDBG grant application is going on right now, it continues through the remainder of this week through Friday, and the new small business grants that we're going to be making available will be available through November thirtieth, and we'll probably get the applications out into the world, maybe sometime tomorrow, but hopefully yet this week.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on this one? Okay, Ms. Cohen, can you call the role for us, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Next matter we have for consideration is ordinance O two zero twenty dash seven eight and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Safe Skies Aviation LLC to provide fixed base operator services and snow removal at Middletown Regional Airport and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as we are transitioning away from city employees who are providing services at the Middletown Regional Airport, we're looking to have a six-month contract with a contracted provider for fixed base operator services. Safe Skies Aviation LLC is an entity that has been operating successfully at our airport for many years, they've agreed to take this on on a temporary basis, so their contract would cover the time period December first twenty twenty through May thirty first twenty twenty one. Cost for those services would be eighty five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, they would also be providing snow removal on an as-needed basis at a cost of fifty dollars per hour with a not-to-exceed total of thirteen thousand. So combined, if you extrapolated that for a full year, that would equal around one hundred and eighty four thousand two hundred and forty dollars, that compares to the personnel costs that we budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty with city employees of just over two hundred and ninety thousand. So we will be saving some money and we'll be using this time to develop a request for proposal for a much longer-term, more permanent FBO that will happen after that June first period and beyond.
Any other comments? Ms. Cohen, will you please call the role?
Mayor Condry.
Obstand.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Next matter we're considering is ordinance O two zero twenty dash seven nine and ordinance authorizing execution of a cooperative agreement between the City of Middletown, Ohio, the Warren County Port Authority, Sawyer's Mill Project One LLC and Huntington National Bank as trustee approving and authorizing related matters and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Palanick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as part of the Sawyer's Mill Residential Subdivision project, there was infrastructure that was being developed, and there was a series twenty nineteen revenue bond that was passed by the Warren County Port Authority to assist that. This action essentially simply provides the city authorization for them to refinance that particular revenue bond, just allows them to get basically better, better interest rates, better terms on the refinancing, doesn't change the project in any way, doesn't change the TIF in any way, it just requires our authorization, so it's a fairly sort of boilerplate action.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, Ms. Cohen, can you please call the role for us?
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Next matter we're considering this evening is resolution R two zero twenty dash three four, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of coronavirus aid relief and economic security or CARES Act funding and the transfers and supplemental appropriations associated with the approval of these expenditures and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Palanick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thanks to our friends in Washington, we received not only a first allotment of CARES Act funding of over a million and a half dollars, but also this second round, which was a million seven hundred and fifty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety six dollars and fifty seven cents. As we've talked about, it has to be spent and/or encumbered by December thirtieth, so this is the city council providing specific authorization on how we are spending all of these various funds. So you have a number of items this evening specifically that is hundred percent being funded with CARES Act. We also, you've heard about in the past, a number of the projects we've done, including, you know, painting the jail with antibacterial paint and buying a number of personal protective equipment and other things that will enhance social distancing and things like that, and then the remainder of those funds that didn't have specific projects or programs wind up going to pay for the personnel costs associated with first responders. So this, in a sense, is the authorization to do all those things and to spend those consistent with the federal requirements.
Any comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the role for us?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Next matter we have this evening is ordinance O two zero twenty dash eight zero and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Loth Incorporated for the purchase of furniture and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
We keep doing that tale, it's funny, all right.
Sorry.
No, there's a delay, it's not anyone's fault, it just makes me laugh. Any comments, Mr. Palanick, on this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is one of those projects that is a hundred percent funded through the CARES Act, it is providing office furniture for our health department so that they can appropriately maintain distancing within their office, it's in the amount of forty three thousand three hundred and twenty one dollars and ninety one cents.
I love the new window that was put in, I think that's a really great addition, so good work on that one.
I have not been in their offices in a while, but I can tell you that from experience that there's sardines in there, so hopefully this is a really good use of the spuns.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the role?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Next matter we have this evening is ordinance O two zero twenty dash eight one and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of eighty-two APX six thousand X E radios and associated equipment for use by the Division of Fire and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second. Mr. Palanick, do you have any comments on this one?
Yeah, yes, I do, Madam Mayor, this is another example of our fire department being remarkably resourceful and creative and recognizing where they can find resources that might not otherwise have been there, so this too is a hundred percent of CARES Act funding where their handheld radios were not going to be supported anymore by software because they were so old, and they realized that you could use a hundred percent CARES Act funding if you purchased handheld radios for every single officer because then they would not be sharing them, and of course, the likelihood of sharing virus or disease. So as a result, we're able to purchase eighty-two new APX six thousand X E radios from Motorola, allowing each of our officers to have an individual radio at the cost of four hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty cents. So hats off to the fire department and hats off to the CARES Act program.
Absolutely, I want to underline that because this is a bill we've been anticipating for several years, and to have the fire department be creative and think of this use of these funds is just, just kudos to the chief and the deputy chief and everybody involved in doing this, so thank you, everybody.
Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the role?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Next matter for consideration this evening is ordinance O two zero twenty dash eight two and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Protech for the purchase of gas masks and headsets for the Division of Police and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Palanick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and this is our police chief also being very creative and resourceful in finding that he could purchase individual gas masks and headsets for his special operations unit with a hundred percent CARES Act funding at a cost of thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Something we hope we never have to use, one of those purchases. Any comments? But, but I'm glad we're getting them, don't get me wrong. Ms. Ms. Cohen, can you please call the role?
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Next matter for your consideration is resolution R two zero twenty dash three five, a resolution to urge Governor Mike DeWine in the Iowa Legislature to extend the deadline for conducting public meetings electronically and declaring an emergency.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Palanick, do you have comments on this one?
Uh, yeah, this resolution is fairly self-evident, as Ms. Cohen said, we are asking the governor and the legislature to certainly consider extending that deadline for allowing municipalities to continue to hold public meetings via electronic technology because we know the pandemic is certainly not over and it is, in fact, at an all-time high, so we think it's very important to allow for these to be continued past December first, which was the original timeframe that that was supposed to expire, which was first declared on March ninth of twenty twenty.
Any other comments? Appreciate city staff thinking of this one, it's definitely something we need. Okay, Ms. Cohen, will you please call the role?
Ms. Nanny.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Condry.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Next matter we're considering is ordinance O two zero twenty dash eight three and ordinance amending the downtown TIF district established in ordinance number O two thousand dash seven two pursuant to a higher revised code section five seven zero nine point four zero, five seven zero nine point four two, and five seven zero nine point four three, authorizing the payment of a portion of service payments in lieu of taxes to the Middletown City School District and the Butler Technology and Career Development School District and declaring an emergency, however, no action is requested until December first.
Mr. Palanick?
Yes, in this case, the city's downtown tax increment financing district was first created on June sixth of two thousand for a twenty-year period, so hearing that, of course, it's set to expire, we have the opportunity through law to actually extend that by ten years so that it would be thirty years ultimately and continue on till twenty thirty, and by extending it rather than creating a new one, we then retain all of those original base values with the extension, so it gives a lot more value ultimately that could come back and be used. Also, in addition to the extension, it was fifty percent abatement, this will extend it at a hundred percent, while the schools would still receive their twenty-five percent reimbursement. So we feel obviously this could assist in economic development over the course of the next ten years and be something entirely appropriate to take advantage of, particularly by retaining those original base values from back in two thousand.
Mr. Palanick, do we have any opportunity to amend the boundaries or does it need to stay as is, as passed in two thousand?
Um, I think Rochelle probably is well-suited to answer that question. Rochelle, uh...
This, yep, this particular TIF, we have to keep the boundaries, we can always create a new TIF if there was a particular property that we're interested in capturing, reverse to, we can always take parcels out of the TIF as well, too.
Okay.
Is there a particular area you're looking at, or?
No, I just know that the landscape of downtown and Middletown has changed in the last twenty years, and if we were reviewing it, I just wanted to look at it with fresh eyes and see if what made sense twenty years ago still makes sense. and see if what made sense 20 years ago still makes sense.
Any other comments or questions? Susan, you're muted, sorry.
My apologies.
Thank you.
The next matter we will consider is Ordinance O-2020-85, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for Small Business Economic Development Grant with Marie's Crafty Hut LLC located at 2910 Town Boulevard. Here for a first reading. I apologize, I'm one off. Let's start that one over again.
You missed one, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, my apologies. Number 22 is Ordinance O-2020-84, an ordinance authorizing Phase 2 of the contract with Ullman Schulte LLC for the Lakeside Redirection Project and declaring an emergency. No action requested until December 1st, 2020.
Great, Mr. Palanick, do you have comments?
Yes, as part of the city's long-term control plan, the big project that we are currently undertaking is called the Lakeside Redirection Project. It involves the design and build of stormwater, you know, redirection basically for a 280 or 291-acre area. The first phase that we did was the design and the engineering. We are now in that second phase, which is technically the actual construction. This is being done with Ullman Schulte LLC, and it'll be done under a guaranteed maximum price. That guaranteed maximum price at this point is $12,161,178. We expect the construction time period on this will be pretty much all of 2021, so from January 1st through December 31st. If it would, to extend beyond December 31st to 2021, there would be a $2,500 a day stipulated penalties thereafter. So it will be critical to get it done within the year. The funds are available within the sewer capital replacement. They've been being built up in anticipation of this project. So this would have us moving forward then on that second phase, which is consistent with our long-term control plan.
Any comments or questions? Okay, let's move on to that 23rd item.
We'll try this again. Item number 23 is Ordinance O-2020-85, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for a Small Business Economic Development Grant with Marie's Crafty Hut LLC located at 2910 Town Boulevard. Here for a first reading.
Great, Mr. Palanick?
Yes, in this case, this small business grant would go to a new business called Marie's Crafty Hut at 2910 Town Boulevard, which is the former Payless Shoe Store. The idea is to create a sort of craft mall where the opportunity for between 70 and 100 vendors to rent and have small booths so that lots of different crafters would be inside in a kind of craft mall. And the $10,000 grant in this case would go $7,000 for the purchase of an embroidery machine and $3,000 for signage. So we think this is a really good, really creative, vibrant kind of use of an otherwise vacant building that'll bring an awful lot of vendors in one place and an opportunity to do business that, you know, in many times, they'd be doing either online or out of their own home or something like that. Now you have a nice retail destination that will bring people from all over and a good new business. So we're excited about it. For $10,000, it certainly will give a jumpstart to what was otherwise a vacant building.
I'm just curious, is this, do they, are the vendors actually present in the facility or is it where they leave their crafts and they're sold by Marie's Crafty?
I think Chrishell can speak to that because I'm not as familiar with it.
Yes, yes, they will, they will leave, they've already started setting up. So they will leave, there's probably going to be one, between one and three people that will be in the store working at one time. So they leave their, it's kind of like, you'd see it in an antique mall or something of that nature, so. And they have everything from wood crafts to homemade knit crafts to glass to wood. They have a, really a variety of different crafts, so it's kind of cool.
Nice, and we're doing, I've been cutting on Friday, I believe, there.
Yes.
I was just going to say, it sounds like a nice place to go and get a local handmade gift for the holiday season. Just putting that plug in there. And then I wanted to ask Chrishell, how long did the building sit empty before Marie's Crafty Hut came in?
Oh, gosh, I wish I knew the answer to that, but I can try to find out. I'm not sure. I'll get back to you on that.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, next item.
Next item for consideration is Ordinance O-2020-86, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for a Small Business Economic Development Grant with Francisco Solis Jr., Francisco Solis Sr., and Martha Solis for their property located at 1338 to 1344 Central Avenue. Here for a first reading.
Mr. Palanick?
Yes, this Small Business Economic Development Grant would go to improve two storefronts at 1338 and 1344 Central in the amount of $10,000. The owner in this case would be making a minimum of $30,000 worth of repairs to the buildings, and this would provide $5,000 of assistance upfront, and then the second $5,000 upon all completion. So the belief is that the work will go over about a six-month timeframe between April and September of 2021.
Any other comments or questions? Do you know what the buildings are used for, what's going to go into them or anything like that? Or is it just basically a white box effort?
Chrishell, do you have a...
Yeah, I know one of it is a real estate office right now, and the others are going to be just potential new businesses, so they're speculative buildings and apartments.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, next item.
Item number 25 is Ordinance O-2020-87, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for a Small Business Economic Development Grant with Middletown Aquatics &amp; More located at 1214 Central Avenue. Here for a first reading.
Mr. Palanick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the last of our Small Business Economic Development Grants for the evening. It's rather small and quite specific for 1214 Central Avenue, $858 to pay specifically for a new sign for Middletown Aquatics &amp; More to make it more professional and more consistent with the look of the business.
Great, any comments or questions? Thought the sign looked great. It looks a lot better than what they've got right now, so I am thumbs up on that.
Yep.
Okay, next item.
Last matter we have this evening is Ordinance O-2020-88, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation to improve and extend bicycle access along city streets. Here for a first reading.
Mr. Palanick?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the good news here is this project is 100% federally funded. It would allow us to improve and extend bike access from Lafayette Avenue to Water Street in the 2021 construction year. We'd be rehabbing the existing bike path along Verity from Lafayette to Gerard as well as improving the pavement and striping bike lanes from Verity and Gerard to First and Water.
This is coming full circle from our discussion at the beginning of the evening with our Parks Master Plan.
Indeed, yeah, very much a part of that. So that's consistent with what we talked about, creating much better connectivity and bike access, so. And again, and it's somebody else's dime, so we really like it that way, which is great.
Any comments or questions from council? Okay, with that, I didn't look up the next meeting date. Hang on one second. December 1st, okay. So with that, we will be adjourning until the 1st of December at 5:30 PM. Probably split between in-person and on Zoom, but we will find out if the governor can approve that for us, so. Until then, blue skies over Middletown.